Okay, this forum is put together by the Adams County Republican Committee to allow community members learn about the candidates. This forum can also help prospective school board members think about the broad range of issues that form the basis of construction board leadership. This can serve as a tool for you to promote yourself as well as promoting the Adams County Republican Committee. We do our best to help all Republicans that are running for all the positions up and down the ballot. We do not endorse snorting in primary, however, we want the voters to make an informed decision before they go to the polling place. And I will start, and this is just random. If Christine could come up first?
Thank you. Hi, I'm Chris Hayes. I'm running for Conawago School Board. I've never ran for anything before in my entire life, so this is all very new to me. Basically, I'm a special intended person. I'm a grandmother. I live in America. I believe that we are a great nation and we need to bring that here.
Yes, speak up.
Oh, absolutely.
No, you're fine.
I have a job, and I love my company. Shannon's going to tell you about me. Unless anybody has questions.
Okay.
Okay, we're going to start with asking just a few questions of each candidate while they're up here. If you are elected, will you continue to be a voice for those who elected you, or will you become mute when issues arise? And there's an example. Very rarely are there open discussions at public meetings engaging directly with the community. Board members typically vote without an explanation, debate, or interaction. The public wants to see and hear why board members vote, whether it's yes or no. Will you commit to being the voice for the community that is going to be electing you?
Yes.
Okay.
I can be very vocal on these things.
How will you engage the community to improve public schools in the district? How might you advocate for school policy publicly?
Probably through social media. And I'm on Facebook, but I have other ones like my whole frank speech and develop what I can do. But I would put things out for them and invite people to contact me if they have questions or concerns.
Have you read the school board policy manual?
Yeah.
Have you inspected your school district's budget?
Yeah.
What motivates you to want to become a board member?
The idea that children need a solid education, and that includes a broad range of items, different subjects, and I'd like to see them excel and be positive members of society.
Now, here are the three random questions. The questions I just asked, everyone will be asked the same question, the same series of those questions. The first random question. If a student identifies as other gendered from his or her biological sex, what should the school do regarding the student's identity?
They just, at first, contact the parents and find out if it's all right with them first. If it is, then they can go with what the parents say. If not, then they should stay with whatever gender they are.
What particular skills or experiences qualify you to serve as a school board member?
Being a parent, number one, and a grandparent, number two, but also going for an extra bit of education. So she needs a degree in gender studies, so I think that would help.
What specific actions will you take to increase the role of parents in decision-making and promote parental involvement in schools?
Well, like I first said, social media. I would invite any parent that wants to talk to me or contact me to please do, and depending on how many responses I get, I will address each issue depending on the severity or the amount of interest.
Now you have a 90-second wrap-up. Or less, if you like. I'll do that.
You're fine.
I'm just a regular person, and I just, I'm glad that the school, I'm glad that the schools are failing our students, and I want to do something about it. That's it. Thank you.
All right, very good.
Next is Lindsay. Well, introduce yourself and the school district that you were running.
Hi, Lindsay Crouse. I'm running for Conawago Valley. Conawago Valley School District.
If you are elected, will you continue to be a voice for those who elected you, or will you become mute when issues arise? I gave the example previously. The public wants to see and hear why board members vote, whether it's yes or no. Will you commit to being a voice?
Some of you here already know me. "You" is not a word that's ever associated with me, but that doesn't mean that I'm contentious either. I'd like to do things working together, but if need be and the community thinks that something's unjust, I will absolutely fight for that, even if that means that in that forum, I'm standing alone. I'm not here to hear my opinion across the board. I'm here to take what y'all want and make that actually happen.
How will you engage the community to improve public schools in the district? How might you advocate for school publicly and privately?
I don't think there needs to be a difference between public and private if people want to talk, if people have opinions, if people have questions. Sometimes, when I started this journey a couple years ago, I felt that there was a gap between the government and the citizens. Like, we can't get accurate information. When we want to know something, we can't tell if it's truthful. I'm there. Whether I get elected, whether I don't get elected, you need help with anything. You have questions. If I know the answer, feel free to reach out.
Have you read your school board policy manual?
I've read some things.
Okay. Have you inspected the school district's budget?
I have inspected some things.
What motivates you to want to become a school board member?
Um, I have children, and they've been in different school districts, and I've seen some things over the years just build slowly at the end of my high school year. So I've seen that they were pushing the older teachers out to hire younger teachers, and you know, it seems to me that when teachers think for themselves, that's a no-no, and you know, I just want to do the seat justice. And not saying that you wouldn't either, you know? If it has a community, if you want me and my- myness, I'm here for you. If you think someone else is better, that's completely okay too.
If elected, what would you hope would be key accomplishments of the board during your term? I have one if I am elected. Sorry, we're in the same school district here, and we're going to meetings.
Well, since there's one particularly on your mind, I think it's probably going to line up with some things that I say, but which one do you think is important to the residents of this area currently?
Which one do I think? I'm not running. I'm not running.
Okay.
I think she would. I will tell you, I have a voice, and I have been a voice to their school meetings.
I think she's referring to the new building, regardless of knowing that that's the thing that she feels. It's very scary to me that whenever anybody, any building, any business, any just evacuates a building and builds a whole new building without maintaining things and at the expense of the community, I think, a little opinionated here, but I think taxes are completely out of control across the board, and I think just by saying, you know, putting a pretty bow on it and saying something like, well, our kids deserve to have the best of the best, and we're keeping up the Joneses with the other school districts, our kids deserve to go home and have electricity, and have food, and have stability, and not have to suffer at home because they want all-new iPads one season, can't figure out how to work them, they're all broken, and then they're going to just convert to tablets, a different tablet, within five minutes. Like, that's robbing us, you know? If this was a family and they needed to make budget cuts, like, you make those budget cuts, you don't go steal it from somebody else. And I think it's absolutely unjust that the elderly essentially are being targeted. You work your whole life, pay off the house, and then you might potentially lose that because you can't keep up with the taxes anymore. That's disgusting. That is absolutely disgusting. There's no reason that somebody should lose their house, and they're used when they work so hard to pay it off.
Do you support requiring parental permission on all non-academic student surveys that the district may be involved in?
Why do you mention that? Recently, I came across an issue where for the first time ever, there was always permission slips. Can your child do this? Can your child watch this movie? Recently, I saw something that came, and you signed it to opt your child out. They put it in the folder, where they send you something on an app, like, how many different apps are we supposed to use? It was not very communicated well, and I think there should be a guarantee that we're knowing what's going on. There shouldn't be closed doors. Parents shouldn't be shut out, and I do think that over the time, from my childhood to now, parents have absolutely been shut out. We let it happen inadvertently, I believe, little by little, and I don't think you can let the little things go, because when you let the little things go, the big things happen.
Okay. How do you think your school district handled students with special needs during the pandemic, and what does the district need to do for those students going forward?
I do not have children with special needs, so I'm not sure how the parents with those children feel they handle it. I do know that they have said that they just need more attention in that department. I 100% feel that special needs students should be included, but I think not every single child falls under special needs, and I think sometimes I see where maybe the intent is there, but to do something really good, but it gets kind of thwarted, like, I know this is a little side thing, but like bullying. They talk about anti-bullying, but what happens is they put up a pretty sign, and then when they do nothing for the bullied child, and the child finally pushes back, they send a vote to the court, they both get fined. That's absolutely disgusting. If you're not going to stick up for the children, and you're just going to put a sign on the wall, don't punish the victim, because then that's just showing up to just, you must take it, you must continue to be a victim.
90-second or less? Wrap-up.
I'm Lindsay Crouse.
Okay, next, we have April Swope. Just introduce yourself in the school district that you were running.
I'm April Swope. I am running again this year. I ran two years ago for Conawago Valley School System.
Speak up a little bit more.
Okay. I ran two years ago for the Conawago Valley School System, Region 3. I won as a write-in, but unfortunately, 600 mail-in ballots came in, which made me out. But anyway, I'm still looking forward to this race, and I'm looking forward to being on the board, and hopefully, we can have some things change.
If you are elected, will you continue to be a voice, and you'll have to speak louder and work on this. Will you continue to be a voice for those who elected you, or will you become mute when issues arise? The public wants to see and hear why board members vote, whether it's yes or no, and this is a yes or no question.
Yes. I plan on being a voice for my community. They have already heard me at some of our board meetings, and most of them know pretty much where I sit.
How will you engage the community to improve public schools in the district? How might you advocate for the school publicly and privately?
Well, first and foremost, I would say being a voice at the school board meetings, perhaps going door-to-door, asking the common person on the street, you know, some of their views or their desires for change, you know, what they believe in. I could always write a letter to the editor. It can always be interviewed by the newspaper. There's lots of different avenues.
Have you read your school board policy manual?
Yep.
Have you inspected your school district's budget?
I have seen what they give us at the school board meetings.
Okay. What motivates you to want to become a school board member? And actually, I'm going to, from after this, I'm going to start putting that at the end as the 90-second roundup thing, so scrap that question, let me go on.
Oh, let me see. I answered his call.
Okay. What are two or three strengths in which our district can be, in which you can be proud of our district?
Well, I know recently, there have been several children that have gone on to states and districts, and you know, they've made their athletic capabilities shown and been rewarded. There are many students that have received many amounts of money for their scholastic schools, for their colleges.
That's two. That's good. Yes or no? Do you oppose social and emotional standards being incorporated into the curriculum?
I think we have...
Yes or no?
Do I support?
Yes.
SEL?
Okay. Do you support requiring parental permission on all non-academic student surveys that the district may be involved in?
Absolutely, and the parents should have a right to opt out of all those unnecessary things that have absolutely nothing to do with them.
Wrap it up?
Okay, wrap it up. Well, round two.
Round two. Bill Getz.
Hi, I'm Bill Getz. I'm Bill Getz, Conawago Valley School District, Region 3. I'm sorry, my voice isn't carrying. Can you hear me?
A little bit louder.
I'm Bill Getz, Conawago Valley School District, Region 3.
Okay. Same questions as the others. If you were elected, will you continue to be a voice for those who elected you, or will you become mute when issues arise? I gave the example. So the public wants to see and hear why board members vote, whether it's yes or no.
So what's the...
The question is, if you were elected, will you continue to be a voice? As we all know, you campaign, you canvass, you are getting out the vote, you are talking and engaging in the public, and what has happened, or what you see happening, not just in school districts, but also in municipalities, once they're elected, they sit there and they're just a rubber stamp, and they only hear yes or no votes. Where's the explanation on why they're voting no, or why they're voting yes, because the dialogue isn't there for the public to understand why they're voting the way they're voting? So would you...
Yes, I would be vocal. The public deserves more than yes or no.
Okay. Will you engage in the community to improve public schools in the district, and how might you advocate for the school publicly and privately?
Right now, I'm engaging with as many people as I can, just through my neighborhood, just through running into people in the workplace and whatnot who are within the school district, encouraging individuals to come out, attend the school board meetings, let them know what's going on, since we don't have many people attending the school board meetings. So that, just that constant interaction with others, as well as the opportunity that every school board member has an email address, that that would be a form of communication in which the constituents could reach out to the voice concerned questions.
Have you read your school board policy manual?
In part.
Okay. Have you inspected your school district's budget?
Yes.
What... I'm going to ask these three questions. I almost forgot when I said 100 minutes ago. What are the leadership responsibilities of school board members?
I would say that being, voting in such a way where you're following your moral compass, but also listening to your constituents, and not using your constituents to get into office, and then, you know, passing them aside. So, but there's also the importance of, you know, voicing your concerns and being vocal. We see these school board meetings, we have the study sessions where there's virtually no communication, so just being the cypress in those study sessions and forcing the conversation. I like to say that if there's a black sheep in the room, it's probably me. If there's a, if there's, whenever else is saying yes, you know, I'm usually saying no. I shouldn't say usually saying no, but if there's a no, it's probably me. So just having courage and, you know, and not just bowing individually.
Can you describe your view of the roles of the school board and the superintendent?
So the school board members are responsible to partner essentially, to a certain degree, with the superintendent. Superintendent is dealing with the administrative responsibilities of the school district, and the school board members are making decisions on behalf of their constituents, on behalf of the, this school district itself, as it relates to policies, as it relates to financial decisions.
If a parent approached you with a special education concern and stated that he, she, or she felt that this was a systemic problem, what would you do?
I would first of all, express appreciation for reaching out to me with their concern. If there's, if there is, if there's concern that it's a systemic problem, then I would ask, and I would ask to, for the individual or the parent to provide some evidence to corroborate, you know, what they're saying. I am not a special education expert, so if there was information where there was a systemic problem, to use your term, you know, bringing that back to the board and interacting with the superintendent and relying more on the experts as to how to handle it.
Okay. In your 90-second wrap-up, include what motivates you to want to become a board member.
So someone mentioned earlier the idea that we have senior citizens, we have families who are fighting paycheck to paycheck to keep a roof over their head and feed their families. I heard the statistic, I think it's 10,000 Pennsylvanian, Pennsylvanian families, I think something like that, lose their homes every year because we can't pay their taxes. That is un-American. So keeping in mind that balance of meeting the needs of our students, while also keeping in mind that we as citizens have a God-given and constitutional right to keep what we earn, making sure that, you know, while I can't say that taxes would never be raised, it's unrealistic to suggest that we're never going to raise taxes, keeping things in balance, keeping, you know, keeping the budget under control, focusing on needs. I mentioned earlier that, you know, at our school board meetings, we have individuals where there's virtually no conversation at the study sessions, and then the next meeting, yes, 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 yes. The fact that no one, there's no dissension ever on anything is concerning to me, so I think I could serve as an individual who maybe bring a different mindset or a different opinion to the table.
Thank you. Introduce yourself in this school district.
Hi, my name is Barb Sonnenfeld, and last thing you're going to have to tell me is I'm going to have to sneak up, because I've never known to meet you. I'm running for Dennyburg Area School District, uh, school board.
If you were elected, will you continue to be a voice for those who elected you, or will you become mute when issues arise? The public wants to see and hear why board members vote, whether it's yes or no. So that's a yes or no question.
Yes, I will continue to be that voice.
How will you engage in the community to improve public schools in the district? How might you advocate for school, for the school publicly and privately?
Well, first of all, social media. Everybody knows that you have to use social media nowadays. Second of all, I have a lot of associations, a lot of groups I belong to in the Getzburger area. I really connect with moms, I try to talk to moms. I just started a conversation with somebody the other day in public, and it ended up to be a conversation with six people in a group. I thought somebody was going to come over and tell us we're going to have to move, but yes, we're going to, the job as a school board member is to make sure that you are the liaison between the school administration and the public. That's our job.
Have you read your school board policy manual?
Yes, I have.
Have you inspected your school district's budget?
Yes, I have.
I don't think she cheated, but she did pull her three questions out of here. I don't think she read them in advance.
No, I didn't read them.
Do you oppose the collection and maintenance of data on students' health, performance, attitudes, behavior, and family, as well as academics in computerized databases?
Yes.
Okay. And that is, she opposes that.
I oppose any gathering of data from our students, their families, anything like that.
What should your, what should your school district be doing to ensure the safety of students and staff?
Well, that's a big one nowadays, isn't it? I understand that we have to have school resource officers, we have to have training, that goes from the teachers, administration, to school resources officers. That's just very important, that our students must be safe in their schools, in their extracurricular activities, anywhere where we're monitoring their children.
As a school board member, from whom will you seek advice or input in weighing key decisions?
Parents. Most of the parents. I am always open to parents. My phone number's out there, my email address is out there. All you have to do is call me, email me, just talk to me. If you run into me in a store somewhere and you say, listen, I got a question, absolutely, that's my job. My job is to make sure that your needs as parents are met and listened to. And also, I brought, excuse me, also, I would probably use the other school board members that have experience and understand what is going on.
In your 90-second wrap-up, what motivates you to want to become a board member?
I am a mother of two adults. I am the grandmother of three, which they call me Gia, but I am a grandmother of three, and I have seen our education system kind of start taking a nosedive because of the political agenda, because of the social agenda, because of all the things that are thrown at us that we should have no business in our schools. I have a three-pronged platform. One, the parents are the parents of the children. They are to make responsible, educated decisions. Number two, somebody's upstairs wondering why I'm there. Number two, I don't believe that politics belong on school board. I don't care if you're Republican, Democrat, free, green, whatever your policies are, that doesn't belong on the school board. That means no political agendas, no social agendas, like, just like I said before, this should not be shoved on our children's throat or our throat. Number two. Number three is, in this day and age, we have to trim our budgets. It's been rough, but we have done it to make sure that we've kept a roof over our head, food on our table. Our kids are our priority. If we don't do something for our education system now, in 10 years, what's going to happen when these kids that are in second and third and fourth grade come out of school? Are they going to be educated enough to be functioning adults? Are they gonna be educated enough to be functioning adults? With that, we must make sure that using your tax dollars provides the best education for these children. Period. Thank you.
Good evening, Alan Boyer, Gettysburg School District. I'm especially nervous after following all those great, uh, experiences.
If you're elected, will you continue to be a voice for those who elected you or will you become mute when issues arise? The public wants to see and hear why board why board members vote, whether it's yes or no. So, the question is, will you continue to be a voice?
Uh, yes, but I also want to emphasize that I think I'm an independent thinker as well, and I will make decisions based on the facts that are in front of me.
How will you engage the community to improve public schools in the district? How might you advocate for the school publicly and privately?
I'm I'm involved in a lot of different activities in the community. I have to learn to say no once in a while. I'm the regional commissioner for AYSO Soccer, besides being on the school board, assessing leader at church, on the board at the Adams County Christian Academy. I'm probably extending myself a little too much, but I get to interact with a lot of people in the community. Sue and I are blessed to live in a nice development where, again, we get to interact with a lot of people and and we're very blessed to have some good friends and family. So, whenever I get the opportunity to to celebrate all the good things that are happening at the school and also to address the challenges that are there, I try to do my best to do that, as much as I can on a one-to-one basis. I do think we can do a better job at school board meetings during public comment. I really try to encourage us that rather than that awkward silence after a question and so on, if we know the answer and if there is someone there that can give an answer, then let's answer it. If we can't, then we, what we say, oh, thank you, and we'll turn it over to the administrator at the superintendent and or his desk, me, and have them follow up. But but I've been trying, I've been trying to push for a little more interaction at our board meeting, and I I forget who it was that said, Mr. Gatz, I think. It should not be all nine-o votes. I I think there should be some, you know, good debate going back and forth in meetings because I think that shows our constituents and the community, you know, that we are independent thinkers and we're not a rubber stamp.
Have you read your school board policy manual?
Yeah, I'm gonna go a little bit further on that. Not only have I read that six-inch manual, it's also online now, but in two different school districts where I was the superintendent, I'm pleased to say that we took antiquated old policies and by the time I left my tenure at Hanover Public in South Middleton, Boiling Springs, we fully updated those those policy manuals. So, I was intimately involved in that process. And I'm currently consulting and working up at the Shippensburg School District. I was the acting superintendent, I'm now the acting assistant superintendent, much less stressed to be in that support role, but part of my of what I'm doing up there is also updating our policies up there that that they've fallen behind on. So, I'm intimately aware of policy and policy manuals.
I'm gonna get with you after the meeting.
Okay.
What motivates you to want to be, now that's the last one. Have you inspected your school district's budget?
Yes.
Okay.
Belinda Wallin, our business manager at Gettysburg, I think does a really good job, but I think a really important part of our role as school board members is not to just hold the superintendent accountable, but other members, key members of our leadership team, and especially when it comes to the dollars and cents. And and that's and that's a big part of our responsibility as board members.
If elected, what would you hope would be the key accomplishments of the board during your term?
I was recently moved into the legislative liaison position, and I look forward to interacting with our local legislators. One of the issues that I've been really going after like a dog with a bone is charter school reform. Gettysburg School District pays 4.2 million dollars to cyber and charter schools. I am not against school choice, I'm all for school choice. I am against overpaying for services, and we are being grossly overcharged for the services that we're getting, especially in cyber charter schools where they have very little to no overhead. I'm pleased to report tonight to this group that there are two House bills that are in committee right now, and I plan on personally pushing this as much as I can to get these things to move forward where, right now, what happens with cyber and charter schools, they get a student from Gettysburg or Conalwaga or wherever, all of a sudden, when they get there, they have a little bit of a speech issue, or they have a hearing issue, or they or some other issue that they can label as special education, and they double the amount of money that they're robbing from the public schools. And they're not answering to taxpayers. We in the school board, the local school boards, we're the ones answering to the taxpayer and the local community. So, I plan on working with our local legislators and especially with these guys, and by the way, Doug Mastriano is part of the, he's the co-chair of the education committee here in our senate. Now, it's a it's a House bill right now, but hopefully as it moves forward there and goes into the senate, I'm going to do my best to encourage him to support that bill where we actually pay for the expenses that we that are currently happening. In special ed, they're they're now moving to, instead of one tier, they're moving to a three a three-tier process, and those students that don't need as much interventions will not cost as near as that near as much rather than one size fits all. So, I would say charter school reform. I I co-chaired a statewide committee with the Pennsylvania School Board Association with a a school board member out of Lancaster, and we made considerable progress on that, made a lot of resolutions to the our friends in Harrisburg. So, it's it's really gratifying to see that getting a little bit of momentum right now. Sorry, sorry, pause a little.
No, because you just answered the answered the second question. I'm I'm pretty sure you answered it. The important education issue facing your school district today?
I I tell you, if we could cut that charter school payment of 4.2 million in half, we would we would not have to raise millage on our community near as much as we did. So, I'm hoping and praying that we can make that come to fruition.
Why are school boards necessary and what does the school board do?
I I do believe school boards are necessary. It's I, in my encore career, I was a professor in charge of the ed leadership program at McDaniel College where we were training aspiring school principals. And of course, Maryland has a very different system and the way that they work. The the school board members here in Pennsylvania are nine, but we're volunteers. Pretty much all these things that I talked about earlier is volunteering. So, I just think it's great that we have this many people that are willing to step up. But but really, it is our role to hold this school leadership accountable and also to really keep an eye on what what is happening with with the dollars and cents, and then also to try to advocate for our schools with our state legislators in Harrisburg. Property taxes, we weigh we we weigh too much emphasis on property taxes and the way that we're taxed, in my opinion. It needs to be some combination of that, and I would really like to see that happen. As you may or may not know, there was a new lawsuit that was taken by some of our urban schools, and they're looking at, what they've said is, our current funding formula is illegal. So, it'll be interesting to see what happens over the next few months and years to make those adjustments. It'll be interesting to see what Governor Shapiro recommends our friends in Harrisburg. We'll see what happens there.
90 seconds or less include also what motivates you to want to be re-elected, actually?
Yeah, you're right.
Re-elected.
I I, you may not believe this now, I was a painfully shy person. I was misdiagnosed as a possibly, back in my day when I went to school, they grouped us all homogeneously. I was in with a lot of really low kids and so on, and it was several teachers and coaches that saw something in me that I didn't see in myself that inspired me. And then to go on, to be the first one in my family to graduate college and then go all the way through and earn a doctoral degree, and then to to get into the school system and try to have an impact and give back what has been given to me from the public school system, it truly is a great equalizer in my in my opinion. And for people who work hard and get their education and so on and develop some skill sets, they can become really good people in our community that can give back. So, I I do believe I, you know, I've been inspired by a lot of people in public education. I think I have a service attitude and a hard work attitude, and I'm not afraid to get engaged and get into the weeds and and hopefully do what's best for the kids in the community and and balance the the resources in the community with the needs of the with the needs of the school.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
My name is Nick Lovell. I am a 19-year-old Littlestown resident. I'm running for school board in Littlestown area school district.
If you were elected, will you continue to be a voice for those who elected you or will you become mute when issues arise? The public wants to see and hear why board members vote, whether it's yes or no.
Absolutely. I think that's one of the most important functions of a school board director, is listening to the constituents, listening to the taxpayers.
How will you engage the community to improve public schools in the district? How might you advocate for the school publicly and privately?
Well, I think that the community needs to be engaged in forms quite like this throughout the county. I think that it might be pretty telling. Littlestown, we have 11 candidates in the race. We have two candidates that came here to speak to you all tonight. And so, I think that the school directors and the candidates need to be engaging the constituents, engaging the citizens that are electing us, and hearing your your voice so that we can take that and echo that in the meetings.
Have you read your school board policy manual?
Yes, I have.
Have you inspected your school district's budget?
Yes, I have.
I already knew the answers to these questions. He was actually a a guest at our event the other week. Thank you. 19-years-old. Yes, yes, yes. Do you believe that art and music are part of equality education, and if so, what do you plan to make sure, what do you plan to do to make sure these programs remain in our schools?
Yeah, I think that art and music are very important programs. I think that I'm not quite sure about the whole quality part, but I think that they should, I think that it's important that our school districts are offering programs to our students that they can be able to take and use in their lives and that they can take to better for the betterment of theirselves. Back in high school, I was the state president of the Future Business Leaders of America. I think that electives are are a huge, huge difference-maker in the public education system. So, I would definitely support any school district continuing to fund and support those opportunities.
Do you oppose social and emotional standards being incorporated into the curriculum?
I do. I think that we need to focus on the fundamentals of our education system. We need to focus on reading, writing, math. We need to focus on science and social studies. We need to focus on teaching our kids how to do their taxes and how to get a job after high school. Those are the things that we need to stay focused on as a public school system, and we need to focus less on pushing some of this ideology upon the students, and we need to get back to the fundamentals.
What particular skills or experiences qualify you to serve as a school board member?
Yes, I'm glad you asked that question. I I served as student representative on the school board for three years, and so I was the voice and the representative of the student body to the school board. And so, I have a unique experience representing the students to the school board, and now I'm gonna take on that extra step and represent all stakeholders in the district to the school. And so, that's that's a unique experience that I believe I have.
In your 90-second wrap-up, what motivates you to want to become a school board member? And I hope you also talk about the yearbook.
Yeah, yeah, what what motivates me in running is that we we are starting to see our school districts progressively get to a point where we're we're pushing those those ideologies, we're pushing our political thoughts onto students and onto when when parents aren't consenting to that. In Littlestown, when I was still in high school, this was back in 2019, our yearbook, we had a picture of two students that were wearing Make America Great Again hats that were blurred out. We were just in on Fox News nationally, Fox and Friends, for having implementing a social, emotional, and program. So, I think we need to take the politics out of education, and I think that we need to get back, like I said earlier, to the fundamentals of what our district, you know, our fundamentals is what we believe in. That's a natural motivation to run.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Janelle Wrestler, and I'm running for school director in Littlestown.
If you were elected, will you continue to be a voice for those who elected you or will you become mute when issues arise? The public wants to see and hear why board members vote, whether it's yes or no.
Absolutely, yes. I've been doing that for a year and a half, but I'm not gonna stop.
Okay. How will you engage the community to improve public schools in the district? How might you advocate for the school publicly and privately?
Well, I'm currently doing that on social media right now, but I'm also engaging with parents in the school district, which are, if our little boys play sports. And so, having conversations with community members, with parents, and I have been going to, like I said, school board meetings for a year and a half, and I've been very vocal about the subjects that are have been important, things that should not be happening in our school district. And so, parent engagement on social media and out in public.
Okay. What are two or three strengths in which your district can be crowned up?
I, we have a great, I think, sports program, even though Littlestown's small, we do have a lot of students earning scholarships, and our basketball team, football team, in recent years have done really well. Our soccer team this year did really well. So, I think athletic-wise, that's something to be proud of. Fortunately, I I'm struggling with to find anything else, which is part of the reason I'm running. I our academics are struggling, parental rights are being stomped on, and so, I'm, I just don't think, I just don't see anything else at this point. Sorry. No, joking.
What do you think about vouchers, tuition, tax credits, charter schools?
I'm actually for them. I think that if we put fundamentals back in schools, teaching the basics, reading, math, writing, we won't have the issue that we have with charter schools and the taxes that the school boards have to pay or the funds that the school boards have to pay. There's a reason that parents are pulling their kids from the public education system, and the school boards need to really delve into that and figure out what's going on, what they can make changes to, positive changes for parental rights, for student academics especially.
What do you think is the most important education issue facing your school district?
Some current education. Well, we just adopted a math curriculum that focuses on social status, gender, social class, and those will be core questions and topics that will be integrated into lessons from kindergarten all the way up through high school. And no child should ever know and have to be put on the spot with knowing where their parents stand financially, economically, and even socially. Let's just teach math. And so, that's something that I've been very vocal about in our school district, and the math program, I would have voted for that if I was on the board. I would, I would have voted no.
In your 90-second wrap-up, let us know or tell us how, what motivates you to want to become a school board member?
Well, I have three little boys back there sitting in this room right now, and we have two older boys who graduated in 2020 and 2021, and it's amazing to me how much the public education system has deteriorated in even just two and three years. And because of, we adopted these guys, and because of their home life before we adopted them, we've been very engaged and fighting for them, and I feel like if I'm fighting for my kids, I need to fight for other kids as well. And that's And so I'm just trying to take this next step. I felt called to do this. And so I feel like it's important to my children, to my family, to my community, to the parents in my community, and to the students in my school districts.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Deb Stecker?
Deb Stecker, and I'm running for the Upper Adams School District Board.
If you were elected, will you continue to be a voice for those who elected you or will you become mute when issues arise?
I would absolutely be a voice.
How will you engage the community to improve public schools in the district? How might you advocate for the school publicly and privately?
So I'm involved in several organizations, and my kids are involved in sports and I'm an active member of the youth, you know. So I have a lot of connections. I just go out and I talk to people and see what they think. I also sound real estate. So I also have the general taxpayer that may not have students in the district, but I can get that feedback as well.
Have you read your school board policy manual?
I have skimmed through it.
Okay. Have you inspected your school district's budget?
I haven't inspected it, but I've looked at it and I, the school board meeting, we go over it, I watched and understood, but it's very funny.
Okay. What are school boards, why are school boards necessary? And what does a school board do?
A school board is necessary because the administration gets so caught up in their everyday, what they have to do at administration, they don't always pay attention to what their parents and the public have to say. So the school board has it, so we don't need to be too.
Do you oppose social and emotional standards being incorporated into the curriculum?
No.
Do you believe that art and music are part of equality education? If so, what do you plan to do to make sure these programs remain in schools?
Yes, I believe that art and music are very quality for education, and I will vote or do whatever I need to do to keep those programs.
In ninety seconds or less, your wrap-up, include what motivates you to want to become a school board member?
Well, I have two children in the school district. Right now, they're at the elementary levels. So I have years to look forward to being in the school district. And I believe the best way to be part of your child's education is to be involved. And I see so many parents that don't have the time to be involved where my schedule allows me to. So I want to be a representative for all the parents, for all the children. And I believe that change also happens on the local level. So you've got to start somewhere and work your way up.
Thank you. Tricia?
Hi, I'm Tricia Plank, and I'm running for Upper Adams School District Board.
If you were elected, will you continue to be a voice for those who elected you or will you become mute when issues arise?
I would absolutely be a voice.
How will you engage the community to improve public schools in the district? How might you advocate for the school publicly and privately?
I've used social media already in running my campaign. I don't feel like I've gotten a whole lot from social media, so I feel like there's probably a section of the population doesn't necessarily use social media or Facebook. So I've actually resorted to walking around Big Littleville and introducing myself to people. I actually met the mayor of Big Littleville and had no idea. I've also been approached, and my kids do sports, I've been approached at track meets, I've been approached at the grocery store. So I've made myself available, and I am willing to continue to make myself available.
Have you read your school board policy manual?
I have read parts.
Okay. Have you inspected your school district's budget?
I have, and I would like more detail.
Okay. Can you describe your view of the roles of the school board and the superintendent?
My view of the role of the school board is to, you know, act as a fiduciary. I should be acting in the best interests of the students and the parents. The superintendent, I realize he's probably in a difficult position. He has, you know, he's working with the school board, he's working with administration. But I think one of the things that I find difficult, at least in Upper Adams, is what I have seen is that maybe the most qualified candidates aren't getting the positions there. And I feel like there has to be more of a separation between maybe the superintendent and the superintendent. So it's difficult. I mean, I realize, like, they've been there. I think the current superintendent has been maybe ten years or more. And I think this is the first time that we actually stand a chance to flip the board. So I think we have a good possibility of maybe making some positive changes there with those relationships.
What are the leadership responsibilities of the school board?
You kind of gave a little bit of an explanation. I, yes, I think I already did. But again, I think it's acting in the best interest, you know, of the taxpayers and the students, and not acting in your own self-interest as well. I believe that that's also a concern, you know, bringing in your own political agenda or social agenda as well. And there should not be a place for that.
As a school board member, from whom will you seek advice or input in weighing key decisions?
I think I would probably seek advice from other friends who are school board members. My husband is a teacher in the district, so he has also a different perspective, you know, he's in the classroom, and obviously taxpayers, other moms, parents.
In your ninety-second or less wrap-up, what motivates you, or include what motivates you to want to become a school board member?
I think what motivates me the most is I have, I have two daughters in the district. I'm increasingly concerned about deterioration of education. And I would be an advocate for parental rights. I think there needs to be more transparency. I think there's a lot of things that are going on in the school that I myself wasn't aware of. Maybe I heard it from another parent, maybe I heard it from my daughters. That's not how things should be communicated. My background is tax account. I've been, I'm a CPA. I've been a CPA for twenty years. I really would like to look at the budget in more detail. I don't want this one line item that says salaries and benefits. Like, I'm, as a tax accountant, I need a little bit more detail than that. I've also become aware that we don't control a lot of the budget, and that's a struggle as well. I would also like to focus more on academics in the school. I think we've gotten away from that, in particular, math in Upper Adams. I mean, the last test scores that were available from 2018, 2019, there was almost fifty percent of students who scored at A's or below. And that was in 2018, 2019. So you factor COVID into that, I'm not sure what the test scores would always like the next time that data is published, and that's a real concern.
Thank you. Are you two minutes?
Actually, I guess mine is five.
Your name in the district that is school district?
I'm Annika.
If you were elected, would you continue to be a voice for those who elected you or will you become mute when issues arise? The public wants to see and hear why school board members vote, whether it's yes or no.
I would absolutely be a voice.
How will you engage the community to improve public schools in the district? How might you advocate for the school publicly and privately?
I would definitely advocate publicly and privately if necessary. Although I'm on social media, I'm not sure I would use that as my key means of communication. I'm very active in our school district through different volunteering. I make myself available to people. My grandchildren are in sports. I'm on a field somewhere many, many nights, and we own our own business, and people have already sought me out of our business to ask me questions.
What should your school district be doing to ensure the safety of students and staff?
Boy, I think they should be doing everything in their power. And I truly believe that they are. I actually had that conversation with our superintendent just a few days ago, and he shared with me what is being done in Upper Adams. I think, I heard something on the news recently, you know, that to fly anymore, you have to nearly, you know, disrobe. So that we can fly safely, yet children are going to school and they're being pulled in schools. So I think we should do everything in our power to keep our children safe.
If a parent approached you with a special education concern and stated that he or she thought that this was a systemic problem, what would you do?
I would certainly speak at length with the parent and find out where the problem is in the district. I would likely engage our superintendent to see, to see what he might be able to share about it. I would certainly not drop the ball. I would probably go to bat for that parent.
Do you oppose the collection and maintenance of data on student health performance, attitudes, behavior, and family, as well as academics in computerized databases?
Yes.
Okay.
That's a hard one. That's a double-edged sword.
It is. In ninety seconds or less, with your wrap-up, include what motivates you to want to become a school board member?
I'm motivated to be a school director because I have five grandchildren in our district right now. My husband served thirty years ago. My son served until the time of his death. I also, I love kids. I love education. I think our country is kind of headed in the wrong direction, and I think we need to start at the local level to get things turned around again. I would certainly go to bat for Latino children as well. Our district in Upper Adams has a lot of Latino children we employ, a lot of Latinos. And when I help in the classroom, I see those little faces out there that are just starved to be cared for and to be educated. And ultimately, in my opinion, that's the, that's the purpose of the school board, is to be a liaison. I've heard it said a number of times, but what better word is there between the administration and the faculty, and most importantly, the parents and grandparents of each other?
He brought a book.
Hello, I'm Lauren Lustig. I'm running for school board in Upper Adams School District. Delighted to see you guys and looking forward to a good conversation, too.
Yes. And it was short, so she could get out of here. If you were elected, would you continue to be a voice for those who elected you or will you become mute when issues arise? The public wants to see and hear why school board members vote, whether it's yes or no.
I can assure you, I will not be muted. As a matter of fact, I'll be proactive in terms of speaking. And part of that is me engaging others who are from the public, so I can get a real good solid sense of what they're thinking about. And I think it's very important for our school board members to explain their vote. If they vote yes, well, why did you vote that? Should you vote yes? I'd like to know that. I'd like to go off to that.
How will you engage the community to improve public schools in the district? How might you advocate for the school publicly and privately?
I had a very long career in conservation of natural resources, forty-nine years. Much of it was spent in environmental education. I was a park naturalist down in Montgomery County, Maryland, down, right outside of Washington, DC. When I came to Carroll County and worked for Carroll County Recreation and Parks, I was asked toward the end of my career to become an outreach educator. In other words, I was taking the parks to the people, like in nursing homes, for example, or senior centers. And so I developed a number of programs that were very popular, not only for Carroll County, but for the surrounding county. I had permission to go to Baltimore County, for example, here up in here in Adams County likewise. I, when I retired, wanted to continue doing those programs. I do them free of charge on topics like nature education, history, culture, patriotism, for example. I'll just do them free of charge in churches and VFWs and all kinds of venues like that. I would love to be an advocate for the school district in a similar fashion.
Very good. Have you read your school board policy manual?
Only parts of it in preparation for this, this question. Yes. I had the mission statement.
I didn't share these questions with anybody. Have you inspected your school district's budget?
No, but I can assure you that I will inspect it very thoroughly. When I worked for Montgomery County, Maryland, right outside Washington, DC, we had too much money and so many regulations that we couldn't spend it effectively. When I went to Carroll County, it was the opposite. We had a little tiny budget, but if you could stretch those dollars, blessings on you, guy. And it was really fun to do that. I really appreciated the opportunity to stretch dollars and make very wise economical decisions on behalf of the taxpayers.
What are two or three strengths of which your district can be proud?
Some of you will remember Mrs. Cope. She was the longtime band director for Big Littleville High School. Boy, I was so glad that the, the school system brought on one of her intern students who became the director. And I'm very happy with, with his efforts. It's making really strong efforts on behalf of the children who are interested in a band or orchestra sorts of, sorts of opportunities.
Do you support requiring parental permission on all non-academic student surveys that the district may be involved in?
I certainly do. I absolutely do. Parents are very crucial to hear from, and I want to, I want to know whether they are happy with, with these various venues that relate to their children. It's not the school board's children, it's their children. I want to know what they think and what they want.
Do you oppose social and emotional standards being incorporated into the curriculum?
When I teach, and I've taught for thirty years, boating safety and hunter education, we don't waste a single second of our time with these important topics, getting involved in anything except the topic itself. I mean, the topic itself. And consequently, we have really high success ratios. I can only think of, I've taught boating safety for twenty-five years, I thought of one student failed my class, and hunter ed, two students. All the rest of them passed and really enjoyed the experience. Okay, so I'm not interested in any kind of social engineering. I want to have laser focus on the traditional subjects so our students can be, become productive members of society.
Okay. Now I'm going to give you less than sixty seconds.
Okay. Why would that be? These are fascinating people. They want to hear from me.
We have one more candidate, and then I'd like to bring everybody up here so we can actually get a photo with all of them and so they can also take questions from the guests. So in sixty seconds or less. Does anybody have a stopwatch?
No.
This guy's right over here. I've known him for many years. He should go.
In your wrap-up, what motivates you to want to become a board member? And I do have to ask, where, where have you been? Where has everybody been running for school board? My gosh, it's refreshing. It really is.
I talked to Nick before we started, and I said to Nick, you know, you represent one end of the continuum, and I represent the other. Nick is nineteen-years-old. I was born in the nineteen forties. I'm an Asian guy, but I remember what America was like. I do. I remember specifically what America was like. Some of you have seen that old film, The Hoosiers, about, about. This guy's right over here. I've known him for many years.
In, in your wrap up, what motivates you to want to become a board member? And I do have to ask, um, where, where have you been? Where has everybody been, um, running for school board? My gosh, it's, it's refreshing. It really is.
I talked to Nick before we started and I said to Nick, you know, you represent one end of the continuum and I represent the other. Nick is nineteen years old. I was born in the nineteen forties. I'm an Asian guy, but I remember what America was like. I do, I remember specifically what America was like. Some of you have seen that old film, The Hoosiers, about, about Indiana basketball. I went to a school like that, all right? I want to see us return to traditional values. I'm a patriot. Okay, I love America and the only reason I'm standing up here is because I said to myself the other day, if I am not willing to step up and run, then I also have no right to complain. Okay? So there it is. The last thing I want to do is get involved in politics. The first thing I want to do is defend America.
Maria Delag, can you hear me?
A little bit more.
Maria Delag, Upper Adams. If you were elected, would you continue to be a voice for those who elected you? Or will you become mute when issues arise? The public wants to see and hear why school board members vote, whether it's yes or no.
I will absolutely be vocal.
And she actually has been. How will you engage the community to improve public schools in the district? How might you advocate for the school both publicly and privately?
Well, first of all, he'll call, uh, sir, because I work with the Hispanic community. I speak Spanish. I attend Spanish mass at, at St. Francis Xavier. And I, uh, work with the American Center. And so I really feel called to represent them and be a voice to them. But to everyone, but especially because, um, I have, you know, that, that connection. I've also been making a series of videos about certain topics that are coming up. And for example, critical race theory and social emotional learning to kind of give maybe some inside view about what those terms mean and what it means for the community. And thirdly, um, I would like to bring some of the opposing views together. There are certain things like braver angels or listen first and get people talking together instead of this polarization. Um, you know, my dad's a Democrat, my son's a Bernie bro. You know, what are we going to do? Let's get together and find common ground.
We need to red pill your son.
Yeah, yeah.
Have you read your school board policy manual?
No, I have not, but I have read the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania as a, as a, uh, a fit.
Refers to the school board of school directors. Have you inspected your school district's budget?
No, but I was enlightened yesterday when I presented myself at the Arkansas Borough Council meeting and they enlightened me on some issues that are going on with the budget and new buildings. And so that was my foray into understanding the budget.
What particular skills, I think she already said what her skills are, or experience qualifying you to serve as a school board member?
I'm a, I'm a certified teacher, secondary English language arts teacher, ESL teacher, and I'm also a professor for graduate school education, for a teacher certification program.
If elected, what would you hope would be key accomplishments of the board during your term?
Uh, to, just to echo what everyone else is saying, let's keep America, America. I'm coming from, let's kind of piggyback back on what I was saying before. I'm from this area, but I lived for ten years in France and I moved back in June. And I can compare to what is happening. And because of my job on the international level, I can see, I can feel the echoes. I can, I can predict what is going to happen if we don't stop it now. I, I've lived in a country that's socialist. I've lived in a country where it operates as one big school district. And we have something special here where we have local accountability. And I don't know all the details, I'm learning them, there's a huge learning curve. But, um, we need to preserve what we have. We've got something special and the eyes of the world are on us. What are you going to do, America? Let's do it.
Do you support requiring parental permission on all non-academic student surveys that the district may be involved in?
Absolutely.
In ninety seconds or less, what motivates you to want to become a school board member?
Well, the honest, honest, the truth is, one day I'm going to meet my maker. He's going to say, what did you do? What did you do? And I, you know, I'm going to say, well, it was hard and they might have called me names. Or, you know, um, so I'm, I'm here to, um, step up to the plate. And I also have the same, I can breathe a sigh of relief after hearing everyone else. I can sleep tonight, but it's going to be in the hands of everyone, you know, who stood up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Did I miss anyone? I did not. So could all the candidates come up? So whoever has the camera, do you have your phone?
Yes.
In front of the loggers, they're going to feature? Do you have a microphone?
It's on.
Okay. Here we go. Very good, thank you.
I want to thank everyone for coming. Um, this is just, I think this is a tremendous asset. Are there any questions from the floor for anyone in particular?
Well, there's no question. Actually, for anyone who would want to answer, with the way that the administration currently we have federally pushing everything down and then saying they're not going to fund schools if you don't.
Follow the rules.
Follow the rules. Uh, and, and all the changes with everything that presented. How, is there any way around it? Or is there, is there some way of helping to move forward and actually get towards education?
I, I'm going to take that only first. I'm sure everybody else is going to jump in. I lived in Florida for five years under Governor Ron DeSantis. I know what works and what doesn't work. So consequently, we need to change some things and, and I know how to move them forward.
Al, I think Al would be able to add some.
Yeah.
I have some pretty strong feelings on that. I could go a long time, but I would just say, if there's certain things that we absolutely feel are long for our school district, then, then keep your little bit of federal money that you're giving to us.
We have to stick to our moral codes and get God back in the school.
Absolutely.
And then it'll be corrected.
Any other questions? Yes, sir?
I'm the author of this book, Six Schools, about reforming public schools, private schools, voucher schools, every kind of school. I only brought five of these along, but I have them for you and I can, this three, I can mail them to you if you want a copy. Right, I'm making a list of who.
Michelle?
Okay, so there are several of you that I already know the answer from. But in your school libraries, you have books in your school libraries that have probably inappropriate content. How are you going to address that when you have constituents come to your school board meeting and complain about the books?
I'll address that because that's one of my big topics.
Good girl. Nick, Nick, you want to answer that?
Absolutely. So if there's no educational value to the, in the content therein of these books, and certain ones, I've heard a lot from Janelle over the past year and a half, that have no educational value.
Right.
They don't belong within a mile of the school. And so they need to be addressed. They need to be taken care of.
Earth.
They, they need to be taken care of. Um, and the parents, uh, more importantly, uh, there's books that, um, there, there is content that doesn't quite rise to that level, but there's content that parents need to be made aware of, even if they do remain in the, in the library or in the curriculum. The parents need to be able, need to say, um, because when I was in school, um, just to watch a PG movie in third grade, um, we, we got a permission slip that said, are you allowed to, to watch this? There needs to be permission slips according to the parents on whether or not they want their child to be exposed to that. Um, because parents have the right to be involved in their child's education.
And another school district, R.A. What are your concerns?
Oh, absolutely. That, where do you even begin? I can't even believe that some of these things are in the library. We have to call it what it is, child abuse, exposing children to, I don't want to say because there are children here, but exposing children to acts is a trauma, is it's a traumatism? We have to call it, it's for abuse. You're not allowed to abuse children, period.
Please remember that the, there, they are our tax dollars that bought those books and we didn't get our money's worth. What we got was a real big problem. I promise I'll make it quick.
Have you had a stopwatch in here?
No, I was just, Michelle has been a champion in the Gettysburg School District, bringing some of this, uh, material light and frankly, some of it is pornographic. Uh, it's embarrassing when Michelle read this in front of a policy committee with our librarians there. For whatever reason, some of our librarians are defending this. So I, I took an extra route and I checked in at where I'm helping out at the Chittensburg and I talked to our department chair up there in the library. He says, we know, we know exactly where all those books are. We know where those one hundred books are that are most, that are the most, uh, critical and incited and whatnot. And I know that our, our librarians who are at Gettysburg were kind of playing, well, you know, that it's too much work for us, we wouldn't know this or whatever. They, they know, they know what's out there. And this ALA, the American Library Association, they really have no authority. Uh, and, and they somehow, our librarians are pushing that they are some kind of powerful group or they're all-knowing. And it's just not the case. But the story that I want to share was, my school board president at Chittensburg asked me to, to give him a call and was real concerned. Somehow someone here at Gettysburg, I'm assuming one of our professional teachers or whoever, somehow they had a connection at Chittensburg and they were, uh, looking to reprimand or scold me for, at our policy committee, I, I think I made a statement or something got into the Gettysburg Times about what I said. And they basically, I guess they thought I was going to lose my job up there. And I said, listen, you can have this job if I can't have an opinion. Those are great lengths to go after you personally if they can.
Yes, can I just add one more thing just real quick? Sure. Okay, going back to what you were saying, I know for a fact that the motivation behind having those materials are there is so that they can create a pipeline from school to gender reassignment, that's what it's all about. And they want to insert the parents', uh, parents' involvement in their child's life and education and that's got to stop.
On, on that note, I would like to say one thing. When I lived in Florida, I had a hairdresser that was Romanian and she told me every single time I went in there to get a haircut, she goes, you people have no clue what's coming down the pike of you. She goes, it's chip, 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 and it starts with the kids and it starts with the schools. And she told me this so many times. And so I text her whenever I told, you know, when I decided to run for school board. She said, I may move to Pennsylvania.
I think Lauren wanted to add something?
Well, I could add a lot of things, but I want to thank the audience. Uh, it's been a great joy to come and speak to you guys. I'm very excited about what kind of opportunities we can have as conservative Americans to form voting blocks. Uh, Upper Adams, I think you're, you're the one who said, let's, let's develop a voting block so we can implement some of this together. And that, that sounds like a really good idea. Well, it's, it's, if there was, if there's nine spots on the, on the, uh, school board and five of them are conservative people, they're going to work together and they're going to carry the day. Isn't that right?
Anyone else have a question? Behind you.
Um, you know, speaking of books that are problematic, there are also problematic clubs within our schools. And I think we all know, how did these books get in the schools in the first place? How did the club, like the gender and sexuality lines club get in the schools? So what will you do to be ahead of the game and prevent any of these things from getting into the school in the first place? Like the GSA club? That doesn't appear that it can be banned from the school unless it's in place that's there. So how will you?
It's called the power of prayer.
Beware of things and how will you stop them?
Do you want to answer?
Ultimately, you know, there has to be a proposal, right? For, um, you know, for a, a club to be introduced. So, um, you know, just not giving approval.
I spent the day reading Title IX, Title VI, it's all about discrimination. Yeah. Title IX is now being changed to include transgendering during transition period or if they've already transed. I don't know if there's anything other than, because this federal law, I don't, you know, it's going to have to be changed because it's being slid right under the door like everything else on us. And it's, it's already in there. I was so surprised today when I read that, I'm like, how did you already add transgendering into an amendment in Title IX? But that's what they're doing. So I, you know, we're going to have to be very, very careful on, as long as we accept, again, you go right back to accepting federal funds, you've got to follow these rules. But we've got to be very careful about what we say they can do and cannot do.
And Lizzie?
I got a question about my answer here, but in kindergarten, we're taught the golden rule. Okay, just because certain people are different. Now, my daughter, she's nine, she gave home a day, tears. Mommy, I'm something wrong with me because I'm nine. And nothing's wrong with you, I mean, because I'm straight. Nothing's wrong with me because I'm straight. But I also don't think we need to spread hate. Okay, so like if there's a club like that, that maybe your children, and that's not something you want in it, then that's a, a signature approval thing. I don't think we should automatically just alienate other people. I don't think we need to perpetuate hate. That's something that comes from the other side.
Right.
And that's not what we do. So if there is a child where there's a legitimate problem or, tell me the good word.
She's talking about the same club though.
The same club?
They were talking about transgendering.
Oh.
Yeah. Um, but, but same thing, that's a religious thing. You know, we can't, how do I take need it to? And some, some of these things, I worry that we're going to have to double it short and it's going to hurt us more in the long run. So if that's something that needs to be in the school, although I don't think it should be shoved down my child's throat and I don't think she should come home crying, wondering why she has a problem because she's straight, I don't think we should rob peace from a child who's having a problem. That's what matters here, all the children in the future.
Well, I also would say maybe we should have a club that, that for religious children too. Because a lot of people and a lot of children that want to be religious are being.
Persecuted.
Yes.
You just need to bring back schoolhouse law. One more question. The school board at Gettysburg said they are not going to ban any books. How can you get around having all this pornographic crap in the libraries? And, and getting parents to be aware of what these books really are and, and getting their permission for the kids to be allowed to check these books out?
Michelle, where was it they just had the court say that they had to put those books back in it, back in the ivory? They lost, if the school district lost the case that they removed these books and the court said, nope, you got to put them back in?
So I'm going to answer for Al because I'm on the board with Al. Um, actually, we need the answer from someone up here.
And then you can give your answer.
Michelle has a lot more detail than I, but basically, we have, uh, revised the policy regarding that whole process. They have a new software system that's going to red flag these things. And for the parents that want it, uh, they, they can opt their kids, that these kids can get permission to have, uh, access to some of that material, but they've got to go through an extra step. I don't know, Michelle, if we call it a rating system or something similar to that is what Michelle and I were kind of pushing for. But we, but we have changed, uh, our policy to at least, uh, curtail that, that, those opportunities for people.
If you accommodate it.
Yeah.
I don't think any, any, I have not heard, not even from any, anybody that they want to ban books. They just don't want them accessible to the kids in the school districts funded by your tax dollars without parental consent. Put them somewhere where the parents could take the kids to get them.
Put them somewhere where the parents could take the kids to get them, not accessible for the schools.
And that seems to be the core issue with all of it is, is there are, yeah, parental rights. I have a lot of interaction.
Do we get a decision as to what's purchased since it's with our...
With Littlestown, it's all these librarians, they can choose whatever they want.
It's a little laid out for purchase.
Right, yes. But they have the freedom, librarians have the freedom to choose whatever books they want for the library, not being approved by anyone. And Littlestown just changed their policy or wants to vote their policy to change, the parents can no longer challenge books. So that is, that's a big step in pace.
So when you flip the board, you get to each step.
Yes.
Girl.
And in Gettysburg, they have a rating?
Well, I was pushing for a rating system and I, I had it spelled out. I mean, it was pretty clear what would be...
Phenomenal idea.
What would be, the problem is, the ALA stepped in with the librarians and said, you can't rate books. We rate movies, we rate music, but we can't rate books.
But what, what do they have over?
What does the librarian have over the school board?
Right.
Is it not the school board's duty or...
She, she has...
The problem is, we have a bunch of liberals that are screaming at us threatening...
Early exposure to pornography is an adverse childhood offense. It's abuse.
Yes.
No, it has to stop. And my husband and I went to this, to this assistant, to the superintendent a year ago and asked for a rating system and asked for an opt-in form for all parents, not an automatic opt-out, and we're told, no, with no explanation, just, no, we're not doing it. We were told by the superintendent that basically the school district is afraid of being sued by the ALA and I don't understand why that's even an issue because they don't have any governing authority over school districts.
That's the question I'm going to have. What, what is the, if we would do that, then what recourse do they have?
Yeah. Well, I'm using the words, I'm not a lawyer, so I can't give out people advice, but I would say that like they don't really have grounds unless they have a student in the school district, they live in the school district, something like that. So yeah, they could potentially, I would take, no lawyer, I can't give out people advice, find someone who lives there trying to spearhead it. But okay, let's do it, let's go. Okay. It's court, it's not like... I love to see all the six school districts in the house finally come together and try to really...
Absolutely.
...follow this and...
That's why we're having this.